For being here with us tonight. The March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen Harris County Board of Commissioners is now in session. Please bow your head for our invocation. Lord, we come to you today to thank you for this beautiful Harris County day and the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We also thank you, Lord, for the county in which we live. And we also ask and thank you as for safety for those who keep us safe. And thank you for their vigilance. We pray, Lord, for your guidance as we make the decisions which affect each and every one of us and our families. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Stand with me from page eleven.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is the minutes of the regular session of March the fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion, changes to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, the next thing that we have on the agenda is the Melody Lake breach, dam breach analysis results for option number eight.
Chairman, I'm sorry. There was one person sign up for groups of citizens, but it's about this subject.
This subject. Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you, Nancy. During the February fifth, two thousand and nineteen meeting, the board approved option eight regarding Melody Lake Dam and authorized the consultants to perform a study which has been completed. Ryan Kimsey and Smith are here to answer any questions and give us their presentation.
Good evening. Good little day. So I'll go through just briefly what's been accomplished and what you have impacted. I've got the survey of David Adams.
David Adams surveyed the downstream Ski Lake Dam and the residences around the lake. So we had to have finished four relations for those houses so that when we ran the breach, we would know how high the level of the breach got on those houses. So during our analysis, analysis has been completed. And basically what it's going to require is we'll lower the dam in one section by briefing. So from a nice elevation, six ninety-seven to, I'm sorry, is that right? Six ninety-seven to six ninety-four in one section. And then that'll, basically what that's going to do is that'll reduce the downstream breach. If we kept the level of ninety-seven, you know, one end of the dam is at ninety-seven, one end is at ninety-four, that breach will be higher, the downstream breach zone. So we control breaches at one end of the dam. And the level that you see here in your packet shows the maximum water surface elevation of the breach. There's some abbreviations that I'll go through. We didn't list those. We should have listed those for you. And each of those boxes, callout boxes on the map, we'll see an address on the one we knew the address for and then some we didn't know the address for, but they're actually home today. The FFE, that's the finished floor elevation of the main floor level, finished floor elevation. The LAG, the lag, that's the lowest adjacent grade right outside of the house. So, you know, it could be four corners of the house, there's one corner that may be lower than the other corners. That's what that is. That's what that's, the lowest adjacent grade of the house. And then the WSE, the maximum water surface elevation, that's the maximum water surface elevation of the breach, the downstream breach. So Melody Lakes was breached per Georgia State dam requirements, and this is what happens downstream. You'll notice a little bit of the breach, it was very critical for us to get the Ski Lake Dam survey because it's at the top elevation of it. If the dam is overtopped by two feet, it's considered, that Ski Lake is considered breached also. So this does overtopp Ski Lake, but just a little bit, but not the two feet. There's allowed, I say, terms. So in our, basically what we give you is a, what kind of modifications are needed for this, if you look at page three of the little report summary in form. Lower the rest of the dam from ninety-seven, six ninety-seven, six ninety-four, that's three feet above. This will require some road demo, repaving of the road, possible utility relocation. We feel like that's a, some utilities don't have to temporarily move or permanently move. And then flatten the slopes of the dam. We're going to install four twelve-inch PVC sockets. That's a, just a normal twelve-inch socket pot that, and I can go over details of that in a second, to act as a new principal spillway. That'll carry your base flow up to your five-year, twenty-four-hour storm flow. It's a very common way that we renovate small dams. It works here. There's a colder on the north, I guess it's the east side of the dam now that will be replaced and another colder pot we'll put in that'll act as an emergency spillway for the dam. And then the existing riser and conduit system will be routed through concrete and taken out of commission for reconditioning. There are several other maintenance items that state dams is requiring. Tow drains, clear the trees, which while it's been done, there's a few trees on the back slope. Flatten slopes so it's easier to maintain. Those items will still have to be done, even though we are removing from category one to category two, those items will still have to be completed. And then the biggie is it will require the normal pool to be lowered just slightly over two feet. Which doesn't really increase the pool or decrease the pool very much. We lose about one point four acres of pool, which is pretty close.
All the way around equals one point four acres.
That's right, less, that's right. So we're going from sixteen point four to fifteen, so very, very little change. And we've shown that on your packet there. The light colored blue line is the proposed water line.
The drought could come affecting.
Good.
So on this map, this one eighty-five Hickory Drive, its lowest grade would flood a little bit.
Let me find it.
So if they have a basement, their basement's going to have water.
Pretty much. The maximum water surface is slightly under the lowest adjacent grade.
By four.
By three tenths.
By three tenths.
Three hundredths.
Three hundredths.
Yeah, so it's right at it.
Yeah.
No, it's right at it.
Not, but you.
No, I mean.
It could.
It's possible that a slight little water could get in there, but I, this is pretty That's really the closest one of all.
But their finished floor elevation would not.
That's correct.
In this model.
That's correct.
So we had talked about that finger that goes up, like kind of the backward place, that that might be the place most affected, but it looks like it's not that affected.
Based on a telemetry study, it was, it doesn't look like it's going to be affected very much.
With that house he was, that Andrew was talking about that could possibly flood, would it be feasible to maybe stack some sandbags or something just to be on the safe side?
Sure.
You know, just, you know, something to give it a little bit more of a buffer?
Sure.
I mean, I know, I can see where it may not, but I hate for that one in a million chance, you know, I mean, the way we could use some sandbag or something just to give it a little bit more of a buffer, that might, might ease the homeowner a little bit.
Small stacks of home.
Right, some, yeah, this something, yeah.
They may not want sandbags in their front yard.
They may not.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, you, you, you know, they may not, you're right, they may not care.
And it indicates right now if the dam were breached, most of the time probably.
Most of them, it would be owned, it would be owned, the lowestest grade is sometimes in the basin or cross basin areas of the pond. Yes, that's correct.
Now, there are two lines. There's a purple line and a blue line. It's a purple line.
That's existing water.
Existing.
Yes, ma'am. It may not follow the aerial imagery exact, but it's, that's what that indicates, that's the elevation it indicates.
Is there any idea on cost?
We gave a estimate of a little over four hundred thousand for last. We would like to keep that as the estimate for now until a complete design is finalized.
But you don't anticipate it going over that?
I do not anticipate it going over that unless there's some unknown utility costs that really will shut us out of coverage. Which I don't think there will be, but that's really the only thing that could really affect it.
But that's assuming that the road construction, utility relocation, everything is built into that price with that four hundred.
That's correct.
That's a turnkey operation.
It's a turnkey without the key.
Everything done by a general contractor.
That's correct.
And what is the estimated timeline for completion? I mean, how long would it take to do what you're talking about?
The construction only or the design approval and everything?
Everything.
That's a hard one because once we submit the plans to state dam for their mercy, it would be.
All right, without that.
Okay.
Yeah, from the time we say go, I mean, if they approve.
On this one, you're probably looking at three months max, and probably a little less than that, but three months is what I would use as my estimated time.
If we, if we wanted to.
A good contractor realist that we could probably do this in eight weeks.
How long is that going to be?
It's not, what we're talking about doing now is not, there's not a whole lot to it. Once they get in there, they remove the, the utility relocation part of it, that's, that's going to be a lead time on that to getting ready for it, but actual work on the dam is not.
And there's water lines?
There's water line, there's aerial power.
Overhead power and telephone probably.
Yeah. I think Bear could touch, probably, I think he knew.
There's two poles on the dam itself.
Nitrous.
I think there's electrical and telephone as well, please. They'll have to be either temporarily relocated or hung relocated. It's possible that they could temporarily take the poles out, do the constructions, and then put the poles back. But my guess is they may want to not have a pole on the dam anyway. So, the utility companies.
Any other questions? May I take the, Mr. Warren, if you'd like to send that? Okay. Mr. Warren.
I just want to say thanks. I don't mean to go up there. I won't quit saying anything.
I don't think so.
What did you say?
I don't think so.
I just want to say thank you because what looked like a bleak and hopeless situation turned out pretty good, whether it was praying to God or whether it was just everybody reasoning together. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
So you're saying that this solution is acceptable to the residents?
We didn't hear it.
Are you saying that this solution is acceptable to the residents?
Yes, ma'am. What's in right, right here, yes, ma'am. Sure is. One hundred percent.
Any more questions?
So we'll see a task order coming in maybe pretty soon to, for them to begin the design of it and then get it approved.
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the resolution of appreciation, Mr. Bill Champion. Mr. Bill has been our airport manager for, I think, about nine years, and he has retired effective March the ninth. Now, don't see him here, Nancy, but I'd like to read the resolution. Mr. Champion, for most of you who know him, has put his heart and soul into the airport, and for that we're very appreciative. Resolution of appreciation, William Bill Champion. Whereas William Bill Champion became a part of the Harris County family in two thousand and ten, and has now chosen to retire from employment with the county. And whereas Bill was hired on January fourth, two thousand and ten in a part-time position at the Harris County Airport, and then promoted August eleventh, two thousand and thirteen to airport manager, the position he held until his last day of employment, which was March the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas as airport manager, Bill was instrumentally planning and development of the Harris County Airport, working closely with county personnel, the airport committee, and the airport consultants. And whereas Bill worked effectively with pilots, the Federal Aviation Administration, and the general public by responding to and addressing matters pertaining to airport issues and services. And whereas Bill's wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and experience are gifts he shared with elected officials, employees, and the citizens of Harris County by consistently creating a pleasant and professional relationship with those he encountered. And whereas through his commitment to the county, Bill served as citizens for many years by giving of his time and expertise and thereby contributing many hours toward the betterment of the county and the airport. And whereas it is fitting that William Bill Champion be recognized upon his retirement from county employment for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved that the Harris County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize and honor Bill Champion for his service, dedication, and commitment to the Harris County Airport and to the citizens of Harris County, and that this resolution of appreciation be presented to this dedicated faithful sermon, and a copy be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County. So resolved this nineteenth day of March, two thousand and nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. A second, all those in favor? The next item on our agenda is the first reading, the application of Marion E. Buddy Wallace for beard wine on premises and distill spirits by the drink. This is the first reading for beard wine on premises and distill spirits by the drink. The second reading is scheduled for April the second, two thousand and nineteen. The applicant is Marion E. Buddy Wallace. The business is two nineteen on the lake. The location is forty-five ninety, Dragan, Fortson. The type license is beard wine on premise and distill spirits by the drink. The Sheriff's Department, Community Development, and the Health Department have all recommended approval. The vote, the motion and the vote on this will occur following the second reading at the next meeting of Mr. Wallace. Would you like to say anything?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone in favor of this application? Is there anyone opposed? Okay, here we go. Moving to the next item. The next item is the request for tax refund for Walton E. and Fay D. Stokes, nineteen oh one, Georgia Highway two nineteen in Fortson. The amount is forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents, which is the applicable tax. And their reason is the tag was purchased October the twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, and the truck was totaled on October the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. The tax commissioner agrees. Mr. Stokes' tag early was due in November two thousand and eighteen. He voted on October the twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, and the truck was totaled on October the third. The Board of Tax Assessors agrees. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any questions?
How often does this, something like this happen? And I only ask because if I had a wreck and totaled my truck, I'd, you know, I didn't know about this. I must have been, what, forty years ago, I'm just curious.
You have to have a little window there.
Okay, I was just curious how often did that happen?
Pretty people. Any other questions? All those in favor of approval, just raise your hand. Motion carries, approved. The next item on the agenda is the financial statement for January two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Clint is here to answer the questions. Do you want to have any questions on the financial statement for January two thousand and nineteen? No questions? All right, all in favor? Motion is approved, approved of the financial statement for January two thousand and nineteen. Next up is our county manager with his project updates.
Manager of Board of Commissioners, just a quick highlight of the projects that are ongoing for this fiscal year. Number three, purchase of replacement jaws and lock tools for EMS. That's going to be delivered by mid-April. Number five, resourcing two roads, Lower Blue Springs and Lawrenceville. The bid was awarded back in October, and once we get some good weather, the repaving capital will come in and repave those, no longer than this May. Number six, pitch drive paving. The survey and roadway deeds are being performed to acquire two pieces of roadway, and once those pieces of roadway are acquired, then we'll begin the road design. Number seven, restriped various county roads. This was approved back in February. The project has begun. To restriped about thirty-three roads, forty-six miles, so that project will be completed by late May. On the agenda tonight is the G-DID, give us a little bit more money to continue the restripping program, so that is one of the next agenda items. Number eight, repair fencing and backups at Mulchtree Park. That fencing and other improvements are ongoing and are in progress right now to get that park back into shape. Number nine, Elsie Park, everyone knows why Elsie Park is happening there. Due to the March storm, basically the park has turned out to be a storm debris disposal area, and its development will be delayed indefinitely. So we are going to hope for the best on Elsie Park in the future. Number eleven, phase two of the wall off fence of the airport. Again, the, it's on bid, the pre-bid meeting was held March the fourteenth. It's going to be on the April second agenda for consideration. Hopefully that project can be completed by this July. The same thing for the runway, airport runway remark and crack seal, that's on bid. The bid opening is March twenty-seventh, the pre-bid was March the fourteenth, and it should be on the April second agenda for consideration. The airport fly-in is being organized. There's been several organizational meetings thus far. A flyer has been distributed and it's now, has been distributed to a lot of different places. It's on our website as of today and being distributed everywhere we can think. And I'd like to thank Clint also for all of her hard work on this and her continuing hard work on this. Again, the fly-in is May the fourth. We hope everyone will come in. It's going to be a great event, a really great event at the airport. Number seventeen, scrap tire amnesty event. The Georgia APD did approve that grant application for eight thousand. On the agenda tonight is the contract for that project. Hopefully the board will approve that tonight. We can get it back to the state, and then I can distribute that flyer for that event. It's going to be April twenty, April twenty and April twenty-seven. Two senators in a row at the transfer station on Lawrenceville Road to allow citizens to get rid of their scrap tires for free. So we hope it will be a good event, a successful event, just like last year. Number eighteen, the water meter replacement project is continuing. It should be finished by late September. Number twenty-one, the conference and master plan. Again, we had our meeting tonight, and we should be wrapping that, getting that process up and submitting that document to the state in April, in late April, for the state to approve by June thirty. Number twenty-two, Melody Lakes Dam, that was on tonight's agenda. So we are going with option number eight. It turned out, I guess option eight has turned out to be very successful, and relatively inexpensive compared to the other options. So the Melody Lakes Dam process and program and project is proceeding on. Number twenty-five, the monument at the North Port Harris Business Park, that's being worked on, completion hopefully during late May. Number twenty-six, the clearing and grumbling of thirty-five acres at the North Port Harris Business Park. We're waiting for permits. Permits should be received this week or next, and once the permits are received, we'll be bid out on that project to see what that bid amount may be. And number twenty-seven, the prison's locking system and repair of the intercoms, that is progressing, that should be finished this April. And that's about all the projects that are in, that have not been completed that are in the works. Happy to be, answer any questions aboard me now.
Do we have any word on the, the tower fire truck?
No. That's a project that won't end. We have no word on that. Oh, and that will be delivered.
Right.
Number one, where it says we're purchasing various equipment for public works, including safety barricade.
Yes.
And day rage and all that. My question is, what type of safety barricades are we having to purchase? Exactly what would we be using them for? I'm just curious.
The orange, the big orange cones.
Right.
To direct traffic, those type of things.
Well, I was, when you're thinking barricade, I was thinking, you know, like.
Oh, no, no.
You know, like the big concrete things.
These are the orange cones that you put out to direct traffic and that sort of thing.
We're not a hay breaker, are we? We're in the hay making business.
Oh, yes, we are.
Really?
We are, we, we have a fifty acre pasture that we, like they are, store it and use it for construction projects.
Okay.
It's a big operation.
Does that area produce enough data to make that thirty-five hundred dollars worth of equipment?
Yes, yes, in our opinion it does. And we won't have to then buy it.
Yeah.
Pretty interesting, it's a very interesting operation.
Well, number eight, repairing the fences and backstops at Mulchtree.
Yes.
I've been up there and they're looking a whole lot better, and we've done a lot of work. But I had several people talk about how we've left some concrete just laying around. I think I even showed you a picture. It's not real bad, but, and I know we've had the storm that kind of stopped everything, but that might be something we just need to think of and make sure we get back up there and make sure we clean that up. I'd hate for some little T-baller to fall on it and hurt herself, and then we're in a whole nother situation.
It was picked up the next day.
There you go. I appreciate that, thank you, sir. On the fourteen for the fly-in. We're doing the fly-in, is that a county thing? Is it a chamber thing? Is it a combined thing? What, you know, because I've heard about three different things. So it's a county-wide event we're doing that the chamber's putting on. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
I would think it's a county-sponsored event with the assistance of the Chamber of Commerce. I would think it's a county-sponsored event with the assistance of the Chamber of Commerce. It's on county property, showcasing our nice airport. It's a community event, I would say sponsored by, hosted by the county, and advertised by the chamber.
I think that's pretty accurate.
Because I plan on being there, and I think Andrew's gonna be there, so if we're all, if we all show up because it's a county thing, is that gonna constitute some kind of unfair meatball? We're gonna show up?
No, no, only that-
Because I'm sure they're gonna need some help for directing lines and-
If you want to bar here, you guys-
Oh, I'm already, I got voluntold about this, I'm sorry.
And I'm being warned. This is a social, yeah, social, social event.
It should be pretty successful. A lot of hard work been put on that, put in there. A lot of coordination, a lot of different entities. You know, helicopters, warbirds, big planes, little planes, helicopters, free rides for folks that are properly insured-
Yes.
And documented. And antique cars, and it should be a really nice six-hour event.
And they're more advanced this year, right?
Oh, a lot more advanced, yeah. Four aerobatic pilots who are going to the storm.
A band?
A band, the Silver Wings Jump Team, John is there.
So you're saying I'm glad I got voluntold that I'm helping?
Yes, you did.
Well, my grandson's glad, so there you go.
Any other questions on the program? Okay, Randy, you're elming.
Okay, number, item number nine, Manager of Work Commissioners. The county received an email from the Georgia Department of Transportation on Thursday afternoon saying that they have available funding for safety projects like road dropping for fifty thousand dollars. And that a listing of all our road drop meetings, they submitted to them by April first. And so we skurd around and got a list of twenty, got a list of fifteen roads encompassing twenty-one miles of additional road dropping, you know, centralized and edge lines sort of thing. And so hopefully the board will approve that tonight, we can get that to GDOT. And it's fifty thousand dollar grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation with a ten percent required match by the county. So this will be a fifty-five thousand dollar project to be performed by the county. You know, we haven't bid it out except bid, just like the other one. And it has to be completed by June of twenty twenty. So we're gonna put this in next year's budget to perform.
How are these roads picked again?
The, my, Brandon Public Works Director says these are his worst. The roads we're strapping down, and these roads are, in his opinion, the worst roads that needs dropping. That he gets a lot of complaints on.
Could this list be altered or changed in any way? That's, Callan Road is a major thoroughfare for students every morning on the way to school. And that road is, I mean, in areas, the first section that road was paved, the marking is so worn that, I mean, you basically have no lines on that road. But for a bunch of school-aged kids to be driving down that road, it can be somewhat dangerous, in my opinion. I don't know if that could be looked at, if it could be altered in here or not.
Is Callan on the current striking list that we're working on?
No.
Okay.
How, how long is it?
No, it's not considered.
It's pretty long, because-
That, that first section is the worst section.
So a section of the place?
Yeah.
Is it the whole length?
No, it's not the whole length. That first section was done from Lower Blue to, there's a cemetery on that road. That's the first section that's paved, and that's the, by far, the worst section there.
We can put this section in. So Callan Road from-
Lower Blue.
Lower Blue to-
Cemetery.
To the cemeteries.
We'll get the dis-
That's right near the power lines.
Right, right, yeah.
We'll put this in, because this is estimated cost, you know, we have a fifty-five thousand dollar project, and the bids could come in a little bit higher, a little bit lower, you just never know. But I'll put this with us. We'll, we'll put it on and submit it on the April first.
Is there a motion? I make a motion, we authorize submission of grant application to the GDOT.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. For submission of the grant application and approve the roads. That's awesome. All right, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am, I have two items. First one is an agreement with City of West Point for inmate work details. City of West Point requested that we, that the county enter into a contract with West Point for the county to provide eight inmates, four days a week, work ten hours a day and on city projects in, within the city limits of West Point. And they all pay ten dollars a day per inmate, plus they pay the salary and benefits of the necessary correctional officer that we have to send with them according to the Georgia Department of Corrections. This agreement that is attached is the same agreement that we have entered into with Toff County last year or year before last, and seems to have worked fine. So county and city will provide all the equipment, tools, and everything else. It'll begin July one, two thousand nineteen, and then it'll renew automatically unless it's, one party decides to terminate. And the, the contract can be terminated without cause on thirty days written notice. So if we get into it, decide it's not working, we give thirty days' notice, the contract's over with. And the work, there's a clause in the contract that the work has to be done on public property only. No work can be done on private property, which is the same thing as, is in the Toff County agreement, and it's the same obligation imposed on, imposed on Harris County as, as a, you know, the agreement with the DOT. I think this, from what I have understood, the contract with Toff County's worked, worked well. And I think that Ms. Nelson, Ward Nelson, I believe, has got enough manpower out there to be able to do this, and it's certainly helped out at this point with the county. Toff County's closed down each work camp, and I think West Point had a, had a team that came in for that work. And so it's, you know, cooperation and agreement between, between entities. And, you know, you have to realize too, West Point is, is in, spills over into Harris County and, and part of our industrial park is in West Point. City of West Point, and, you know, they use, we use city water, West Point water and utilities up there. So it's, it's something I think would be beneficial to the county as well as to West Point. I recommend to you for your approval.
Are there any questions on Ward Nelson? My question was gonna be if the town, the county contract seemed to be working.
Yes, ma'am, it is. On the days that it's raining, they don't use two inmates instead of five. So they have been very appreciative of that inmate work detail, especially with their re-occupations on there as well. Because inmates have to help with cleanup, debris, and anything that's going there.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the, okay, work detail agreement with the City of West Point. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion to approve, and second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Chairman, the next item is an EPD agreement regarding the scrap tire amnesty event that Randy was talking about a little while ago. It's a contract with the, between Harris County and the EPD that agrees that the EPD will reimburse Harris County eight thousand dollars for the scrap tire payment program, and that all these tires will be picked up in, in, we have thirty days to move the tires from the point of, they're gonna be delivered to the county. We have thirty days to move it to the designated location for, that the EPD is, is going to provide. And then ninety days after that, we have to submit, within ninety days, submit a request for reimbursement. And that reimbursement will be for eight, eight thousand dollars for the, for the beneficiaries by the county and getting ready for the, for this abatement. I recommend to you for your approval.
Randy, did you say this worked really well last year?
Yes, that was the first time we did it last year. We collected over twenty-seven hundred tires, about thirty-one tons, on a two-day event. And I remember both those days were raining. I think people appreciated that they could get rid of scrap tires for free during two days. It was very successful. I think it worked very well, plus it was all fully reimbursed by the state.
And this is just for like standard tires in a farm tractor?
Exactly, passenger tires. Last year we accepted rims, and there was a lot of rims. But we derimmed them and got money for the tire, and got money for the scrap metal. But now we're, now we're only going to accept passenger tires with no rims, because we had several hundred rims. It took some guy at the fleet management two weeks just to derim everything. And then the machine broke on top of that. So they said, please don't accept any more rims. So passenger tires only, no tractor tires, no foam fill tires, those sort of things. And that, and these tires are on the flyer of what we can't account except.
Any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second? Motion passes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am, I have nothing else. I think there is, is needed to go into executive session briefly for the purpose of litigation pending potential threat as well as possibly personal.
Okay, all right. Anyone have anything else? Motion to go into executive session. Motion is second. Executive session.